Good evening or good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to our Stormwater Management Program work session. Thank you already to the many staff who are in attendance today to help us improve our understanding of this important and sensitive issue in our community. I'm going to begin with just a couple of opening remarks before handing it over to the manager to introduce the stormwater management staff who are here to lead the bulk of today's conversation. But we've prepared an agenda which features a couple of objectives, and in introducing those, I wanted to just remind us of, well, I call them the precipitating events, and then Mark teased me for the pun, that led us to want to do this work session today. So our goal is really to understand that a couple of key problems or challenges in our community around stormwater management, and also improve our understanding, and we hope the understanding of those watching and listening and working on these issues with us about the barriers, constraints, and challenges and opportunities. So what led us to come here actually were two sets of problems, actually somewhat in tension with one another, that surfaced during the operating budget conversations and then during the capital improvement plan work session and conversations. The first, as you all may remember, this board discussed at some length during our operating budget deliberations, probably back in March, about an interest in our stormwater development regulations, and particularly with respect to single-family home projects, whether our ordinance was effectively attuned to balance both mitigation on the one hand, but also cost effectiveness for those projects on the other. After we had those conversations, our community experienced quite a bit of rain, including some attendant flooding, which really elevated the issue during our CIP hearings and briefings about how we are addressing flooding, and in particular with time and capital-intensive problems, or, excuse me, problems that have solutions but that may be time and capital-intensive, how we are prioritizing assessing and ranking those. So those are two of the events or problems or concerns of this board, I think, shared by some in the community that have brought us to this table today, and I really appreciate staff's effort to not only help familiarize us with the broader and sometimes technical landscape of our stormwater management program, but to really seek to address the kind of answers to those two questions, or help us frame our own thinking. So with that probably too lengthy introduction, I'm going to turn things over to the manager to introduce staff to kick things off.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. Today, you will, I'm going to start off the presentation with Demetra McBride and assisting her, Jason Papakosma. You all know Greg Emanuel and Liz Thurber is here, and we have other experts available in the audience, so Demetra, take it away.
I don't know, do I have to, for the record, formally introduce myself? Demetra McBride, the Bureau Chief at the Office of Sustainability and Environmental Management in DES, Department of Environmental Services. Jason and I first would like to thank the board for their time and their guidance last week in pushing this towards an issue and resolution approach that goes beyond mere information sharing and focuses us really tightly on two key public concerns that have been identified by the board. One, as you've already noted, is the capacity of the integrated stormwater system to mitigate a more extreme rainfall season and the type, cost, and timing of the capital solutions. And the second, whether or not, or whether the Arlington Stormwater Management Ordinance creates a reasonable balance between onsite mitigation, neighboring and downstream impacts, equity, the drive to, and the drive to achieve a simultaneous suite of benefits and co-benefits. I've emphasized the word mitigation in both of those because as we communicate to the public at all times, we're driving for solutions that are risk mitigation, not risk elimination. Regrettably, nature can always outdo us, or one-up us, sorry, you're right. Okay, moving on. Briefly, and I just wanted to mention about, I'm going to do something personally that I've never really done before, I'm going to partially read my comments, because Jason and I are going to endeavor to do a very brisk run through this to give the board the predominant bulk of the time to answer its more granular questions. So moving into the overview and context, the original 1958 stormwater plan was first adopted, it was the first adopted element of the county's 1960 comprehensive plan, but it was structured for progressive updates and including the opportunity for clarifying studies and assessments. We've organized this presentation, as shown, generally along a chronology of historical context, our two key contemporary challenges and near-term strategies for prioritizing and optimizing investments. The most succinct, yet most effective means to distill the program origins and its purpose is to compare its mission with its objectives, goals, and outcomes. We're now going to read this slide, but we did want to use it to highlight a couple of very prominent reoccurring themes and drivers related to the management and optimal effectiveness of the program. This is that the stormwater sewer system is an integrated system and includes both the constructed and the natural elements. It's often set aside or let to stand alone, separate apart from other infrastructure, but indeed it is community infrastructure managed along common standards such as state of good repair and level of service. And embedded in each of the program's projects, policies, and activities are principles for combining physical, operational, and biological performance, and to endeavor to design and implement each policy, program, project, and activity to meet and promote a suite of goals that cross multiple sectors as are listed in this third block. This is a performance-based approach that promotes bundled economic and environmental social outcomes, and obviously also heightens the cost-effectiveness of each of our invested dollars. A recent example is the Windy Run Project, which reversed instability and potential collapse of a primary neighborhood road, stabilized the land supporting a sanitary sewer pump station, corrected extensive stream erosion, addressed negative water impacts and trends, and secured and exposed waste sewer pipe that was susceptible to damage and cross-contamination of the stream. It demonstrates the capacity of these projects to simultaneously drive many, most, or all of these outcomes. The stormwater management plan was updated in 1996, and again in 2014, the 2014 iteration represented radical expansion because it was to include a series of key integrated system studies, the three listed here, as well as the emergence of the MS4 permit. The program has been productive over the past four to five years, and has reached a number of benchmarks and milestones in system repair and correction, environmental restoration, information mining in the development of data libraries, and compliance with state and federal regulation. These next two slides really follow the program's trajectory from 2013 to the present. It also includes development review, permitting, and support, a positive audit under the MS4 permit, the first generation, and the build of internal best management practices and Since 2014, four of the 10 capacity hotspot projects that were identified in the 2014 master plan on the basis of the studies have been completed. These pictures are included here not simply to demonstrate the need for these projects, and these are trunk, main trunk, projects, but the inherent scale and complexity of these projects, and unfortunately, the level of encroachment they do make upon the location. This is an overview map of completed projects of varying types. The green dots represent development projects that have occurred on private land, that's development and redevelopment. So when you see this clustering towards the center and the northern part of the county, that really demonstrates for you where the trend of development and redevelopment is focused. The red stars, however, are county system retrofit projects. The hotspots identified in the master plan, again, were dispersed across the county, and it gives us the opportunity to also implement those dollars across the county in inequitable, but equity, again, is one element of the prioritization of that. We're also looking for the, you know, most extreme and nearest impact. This slide is included, actually for the public's assistance, I think a reoccurring public misconception is that the stormwater fund finances only the capital design and construction of projects. And we've included this slide just to clarify that the stormwater budget, it budgets a number of baseline obligations and mandates. These cover nine offices, departments, and agencies, and it covers not simply staff, but also contracts and equipment as well. That is the end of our overview, because we did want to get into the substance of the presentation, starting with problem definition, demand, and constraints, hopefully opportunities as well, starting with the infrastructure and capacity of the system. The problem that we have with flooding, particularly in a very intense season as we've just experienced, is that there's been repetitive flooding, and there's confusion both internally as well as externally in the public as to what is the type or the source of the problem. The flooding really arises from watershed-scale problems, localized problems, and even parcel-based problems that are very specific. Adding to the confusion is that often localized or parcel-based problems are misconstrued as being that narrow by the people directly affected, when in fact, they can really be a larger scale and sometimes even the product of a watershed-scale problem. We're going through briefly these three scales of problems, causes, and our responses. The system is generally, and this is the built system, is unable to handle, bless you, extreme storm events, and you'll see later on, we do have a slide to demonstrate how significant and extreme it was this past year, and not only extreme, but repetitive, so it was distinct and different from 2006, where you had one major cataclysmic event. This was a repetition of events. But the three conditions basically affecting the capacity and functionality of the system or its age, that it may be under capacity in certain areas, and insufficiency of the built system. We have been inclined to identify more prominent and recurring flooding problems within neighborhood, when in fact, they are caused by an aggregate of problems that exist on a watershed scale. While the watershed scale is the most complex, the most time-consuming, and certainly the most costly of our issues, the good news is, is that it may offer greater flexibility and funding mechanisms and strategies, which we'll just briefly address later on. This next map is actually generated by the 2014 master plan. It identified the hotspots based on the data gathered before and around the comparative data with the 2006 extreme event, that storm. We did measure it up against data from this past year. A lot of these were duplicated, the complaints that we got, the flooding that we experienced mimicked the patterns from the 2006 event. There were a couple other additional hotspots that were identified, but again, under significant intensity and repetition of the storms. Another set of challenges that affects the watershed scale problem, this is just a terminology we internally use, which is macro and micro. The macro are really conditions that we have inherited, such as the plan of development, the undergrounding of the streams, and/or we have limited control over them, such as development, since our ability to govern that is subordinated to the authority of the state. The micro elements are challenges that we typically encounter, really at the street level. As you saw in those earlier pictures, it wasn't an accident. These remedial projects can sometimes take on large scale, they require significant construction, it's an encroachment, it's a disturbance, and there are other issues like trees, the acquisition of easements, and of course, the main problem that we have here is always amplified by the lack of space. We're very constrained here. We're fighting for overground space, and we're also fighting for underground space with other infrastructure that already preexists. But this demonstrates too, the fact that we really want to work very heavily in moving forward with the public, because we absolutely need their collaboration in order to find solutions. The localized draining issue is not exclusively, but predominantly associated with insufficiency of the system. Common examples, or the lack, I should say, also, of what we call tertiary infrastructure. It's not just the main trunks, which you've already seen, but it's laterals, culverts, inlets, outlets, and other elements. So some common examples of causes are lack or insufficiency of laterals, lack or insufficiency of proper, or proper location of outlets and inlets, conditions of culverts, and even road grading and elevations. We're also challenged by the wonderful, but somewhat dynamic typography of Arlington And the last of the three is the parcel-based scale. We know that the board receives a steady flow of these complaints, we receive them. We know that adding to the kind of anxiety or frustration on the part of the public is the fact that they often misidentify or under-identify what the cause of the problem is. They tend to look at the parcel or the location where they see the water entering their property and associate the problem just with that source. And more often than not, it is a confluence or aggregation, again, of causes that are coming and resting in this one parcel. The other problem is that so very often, these parcels that experience predominant flooding are what we call, again, going to the typography, they're at the bottom of the ball. So when any of these occurrences, when any of these factors occur, or, you know, more than one of them, the gravity brings them to settle down in these particular areas. It's the smallest, the most targeted. It can be a larger problem, because it can be associated with a localized, or even sometimes a watershed-based problem. The other problem is that because we've had such an active and volatile season this past year, our tendency to get, when we get complaints, is to be proactive and reactive, and unfortunately, this strains somewhat our ability to really manage in the highest and best use of the dollars, because that reactive management is really drawing funding from certainly the watershed-based problem. So later on, as you'll see, we're looking to address that, but we'll speak to that later. Right now, without further ado, I'm going to hand it over to Jason, because he's going to discuss similar set of constraints, demands, opportunities, and distinctions that address the stormwater regulation.
Thank you, Demetra. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board. Jason Papakosma, work with Demetra in Office of Sustainability and Environmental Management in DES. To help frame this second definition topic, I'll note that we, and I think the board as well, hear from two main sets of stakeholders. Those whose activities are governed by the stormwater regulations, who feel that the regulations are too stringent, and those who live downstream from development activity who feel that the regulations do not go far enough. As a quick recap, the board adopted the stormwater management ordinance in 2014, with the overall objectives to mitigate stormwater runoff impacts from development activity in Arlington. This regulatory program is also a requirement of our MS4 permit, I don't know if we've defined that yet today, MS4, did we? Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System Permit, which is issued by Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, and helps us make continued progress towards cleanup obligations we have under that permit for the Chesapeake Bay. We went over this data during the CIP work session, so as a brief reminder here, development activity continues to add impervious surfaces to our landscape, and single-family homes account for a majority of these footprint increases. So we regulate in the single-family home space because of the substantial and cumulative impacts, to ensure that impacts are addressed by the source and at the source, and to meet our obligations to focus on the well-being of the community as a whole. Our two main objectives in this regulatory space are mitigating downstream impacts and making progress with our regulatory compliance and water quality obligations. In applying the ordinance, we do our best to maximize mitigation outcomes, often in a very challenging context. Qualifications in the areas of grading, hydrology, and design and engineering, and site-specific attention, as you can see in the example here, are really important. And we also have a strong eye on what happens after a project is completed, making sure that what's built works as designed, in mitigating runoff, and can be maintained. For the compliance objective, it's about maximizing co-benefits. As we mitigate downstream runoff, we also apply the state standards that are based on underlying research and science that allow us to make regulatory progress, and given the large share of impacts from single-family homes, if we did not seek these co-benefits, we would fall farther behind. We've emphasized today and previously that the development and drainage decisions of the past set the stage for today's stormwater management challenges. If Arlington's residential areas were being laid out today, streams and stream valleys would be protected, and drainage and water quality would be handled at a more comprehensive scale beyond the parcel level. But we simply don't have the space or development patterns to manage stormwater runoff from development activity at this scale in place of managing it onsite, and trying to do so will be less effective overall and disproportionately shift the time and effort to the public sector. In fact, the stormwater capital program includes a retrofitting component in public spaces to address stormwater runoff impacts from existing development, and this effort's intended to complement the efforts on private properties, so more progress can be made over time. to complement the efforts on private properties so more progress can be made overall. Overall, though, there are limits to the mitigation outcomes under the ordinance. The large footprint, small lot combination often leaves limited room for controlling runoff and mitigating impacts from larger storm events to downstream properties. And these challenges are compounded by both topographic and storm drain system constraints. We have a lot of situations where runoff flows from multiple lots across multiple lots before it gets to the storm drain system. So that speaks to the system inadequacy discussion we had a few minutes ago. And the properties and the path of flow, and especially at the bottom of a hill, are the ones that are most challenged. Our neighbors do not handle single-family home redevelopment like we do. Based on our conversations with our colleagues in Alexandria and Fairfax, our situation appears to be much more acute in terms of the proportion and impacts of this type of development activity, driven by pace and scale, small lot sizes, and land and system Turning to customer service, the stormwater permitting process for single-family homes does often take longer than the building permit process because of the site-specific challenges and solutions required. But we have been working to close this gap. Land disturbing activity permits, which is the name of the permit under the Stormwater Management Ordinance, those permit applications can be submitted early, and we look back at some sampling of projects, and it seems to be happening about half the time that permit application submitted ahead of the building permit application. We also allow for and encourage pre-submission meetings, and electronic planner view has helped improve overall efficiencies. In particular, the building community has been producing higher-quality plans as they've become more familiar with the requirements and standards of the ordinance. So in this, in this chart, for example, the number of plans approved in three or fewer review cycles has increased to more than 95%. We also rolled out a streamlined permitting pilot in January of this year, intended to create more clarity than the state-required regulatory threshold that's based on land disturbance, and to provide a space above this threshold for relatively moderate-scale home addition and renovation projects to implement simpler and less robust mitigation measures. The pilot's not intended for typical new home projects because of the continued objective of mitigating downstream and cumulative impacts, and we plan to evaluate the pilot results early next year and provide a status update. The last topic I'll cover briefly here, and I'm sure we'll talk more about it in Q and A, is our MS4 permit and our progress in meeting our bay cleanup obligations. The current five-year permit cycle recently ended, and we exceeded the 5% progress requirement. The next permit cycle will require 40% progress. With current allocation of available funding, we are on track to meet this milestone, but are not on pace to reach the full 100% target. All of the Bay states will receive updated target levels from EPA in 2019 as well. The next permit cycle could also require increased levels of effort for other requirements for the stormwater program, activities like inspections, monitoring, capital projects to reduce stormwater pollution, and infrastructure maintenance and investment. So with this overview and context for the two main problem areas, we'll turn now to what's next for the program, and I'll turn it back over to Demetra.
Thank you, Jason. What's next briefly was, for the most part, presaged by the 2014 master plan. So there was an anticipation of a risk assessment and implementation guide. We're going to be taking on more cross-cutting approach and cross-departmental approach to see, and if we can, cross-agency, external, public-private partnerships to help maximize our performance. We're going to speak briefly as to what we are doing right now, which is mainly research, but it's exhaustive, on possible funding mechanisms and other leveraged financing. And then, because it was a specific deliverable identified by the board in June, on June 5th, I believe it was, the CIP work session, we want to speak briefly to expanding our education and outreach program. Briefly, the master plan again anticipated that at some point, clearly, and as the chair has demonstrated, I can't say it enough, is that there are large demands, both regulatory compliance and in our capacity, they cannot, there just simply isn't enough funding under any circumstances, even the most wildly ideal, to address them in a very, very narrow time horizon. So the master plan anticipated a mechanism that would allow us to vary, to up our game in prioritizing the investment of dollars and actually looking towards a development of all of these assets and resources under the risk assessment exercise that we could use in multiple ways. Talking about the amplification, we've referred to it several times of this past year in the rainfall. The spring and summer, the rainfall total was over 300% of what normally is during that season on an annual basis. There are studies that will tell you that this could happen more frequently in the future. It's not an exact science. So prioritizing the investments, getting back to that, this is support, it supports the highest and best scheduling, obviously, of the funding and the construction investment. It allows this continuity so there is an interruption between engineering studies, design, and implementation. It's also going to allow us to manage risk, and also, one of the key assets to this is under this exercise, we're also going to be able to develop a valuation for projects. It's really important that we start looking in every aspect towards the return on investment, and it is not going to surprise you, particularly since I think most or all of you have experience in business, to see this kind of financial and fiscal assessment that pretty much mimics the risk assessment for the business quadrant, which goes through a number of different factors. These are fiscal and financial factors, where again, it's going to allow us not only to prioritize impact, high risk, high probability, but also to be able to value these sometimes very costly investments. We're doing an even stronger strategic pivot towards looking to cross-cut and cross-leverage these programs, and to really start a more deliberate, it's been inherent in the design and implementation of everything the program does, to maximize the benefits and co-benefits, but we're going to take a more deliberate approach to that, and we want to already expand or expand upon the success that the program has already had in this area. Again, the beauty of this is it multitasks program dollars, and it also promotes intra- and inter-agency leveraging and public-private partnerships. We're not going to go into this because, again, we're in preliminary state of research. These are some of the options that we're looking at. This isn't intended to be an exhaustive list. At some time in the future, we are going to come back after we've done the appropriate research and the due diligence with the CMO and DMF and our bosses to bring back detail and recommendations. Also regarding the outreach and education, this is taking three general approaches. The two have been, again, existing over time and in the history of the program. We're really adding on the third because we're hoping to more deliberately and strategically use outreach to help drive personal and business behaviors that will aid us. And the specific deliverable that the board had asked for in October, and we're on time, is there was so much flooding, and you knew by instinct that there were other measures that individual property owners could be taking to step in and secure their property and their safety in advance of projects being implemented. We've gone through, we've done exhaustive research on that. We have a website developed, we have a mailer developed, we have FAQ, frequently asked questions, we have a one sheet, all of these, and information this includes about purchasing flood insurance and our qualification in Arlington County for a 5% discount on that unless you live in a FEMA floodplain. And also, we have set up a webpage for this that you see in the screenshot. I just would have mentioned that in the two months since this was launched, I'm sorry, three months, July, August, and September, this website received over 5,500 hits, and the reading time or the viewing time was quite lengthy, so you could tell that the people going to the site were actually reading the information on the site. So we hope it's been helpful. We're going to continue to build upon this. And with that, we are open to all of your questions.
That was a truly impressive amount of information in a short time, well done. So I know these two have been hot topics for the board in our interactions with residents and concerns we've heard. I'm sure there are a great number of questions from colleagues who are very eager to have this session.
You want to break it down into the two problems?
That sounds like a great idea. Yeah, why don't, would you like to start, Mr. Gershaw, do you have a preference with whether we begin with flooding or with the stormwater regulations for development?
Flooding is number one.
Let's go with flooding. That's a great suggestion. So questions to begin on flooding, risk assessment efforts, the difference between the different scales that our staff shared with us, localized concerns about which you've heard. Don't be shy, there was a clamor for this work session, so I'm expecting lots of questions.
It's a lot to absorb, but you've done a very nice job, but as it sinks in, I think I could start us off on sort of a big picture question, which is, in all of this, and I think you've done a very good layout of the trajectory, sort of where we've been and where we're trying to get, but can you sort of characterize, like, when do we get to where we need to, where we want to be in terms of, I guess no community is ever not going to have any issue with stormwater, right? You're always going to have some specific events, you're going to have impacts, you have systems that break down, they get clogged, whatever, but in terms of the overall trajectory of where we're going, like, in what timeframe roughly? I mean, are we 20 years, 40 years, 100 years away from having a functioning, a fully functioning stormwater system where we wouldn't be talking about, you know, these kinds of impacts on properties?
You're going to feel like I'm dodging that question, and let me explain why it's hard for me to give an exact projection on that. Is that where I said that we have micro issues, every project, even when you're talking about parcel beds, can be very time-consuming and require a number of studies, but certainly when you're looking at the hotspots and you're looking at watershed-based or very large sub-watershed-based issues, you're looking at probably, in the most ideal sense, and this is assuming perfection, that doesn't exist, it assumes that we're going to get all of the easements that we need, it presumes that we're going to have none of the problems of coming too close to other structures, it presumes that we're not going to have any hiccups and have to go back to the drawing board because there's just no space with other underground infrastructure, and that it's just not possible. In an ideal, ideal, ideal space, a watershed project would take three and a half years?
Yeah, three and a half to four.
To four years. So knowing that, and we're not working on them one at a time, we're working on a number of projects simultaneously that cross the scale continuum. And then, of course, there's, there's just the issue of the funding and prioritizing. We haven't stopped, we're moving forward briskly pursuant to the 2014 plan. We believe that the risk assessment, again, is going to give us the tools and the ability to prioritize the funding, whether or not we get to that kind of reasonable, high performance of the system as a whole. I can't say. And again, I just want to make sure that we're talking about reasonable mitigation.
Sure. And that, I was trying to characterize for folks, what I thought your answer might get towards is the fact that we have, what is there, 100 and some hotspots? How many hotspots?
There were 107 actions identified under the master plan within 10 general hotspots that over the past year expanded to 12 or 13.
Right, that under almost any scenario, we, the goal here is we have to sort of look for the opportunities where we have them and triage essentially, and figure out which ones are most cost-effective, because also, I didn't ask you the question, because I didn't want our manager to have a heart attack, about what kind of capital investment it would take to actually get to all 107 of those. And so I was really just trying to flush out, though, a sense of that bigger picture, what is sort of realistic and feasible for us to achieve. And the follow-on question to that, and this is what I really want to get at, is then the relationship between these two problems, as our chair mentioned, they are, they can be somewhat in tension with each other, but there is the issue of each individual watershed and the issues that it's having, and then the impact of new development within those watersheds and how they either help solve for or exacerbate the end, in that watershed. And so I don't have a question there. I think when we get to the next topic, I'll follow up on that, but I think it's, it's just to understand the larger context here, that there is not this magic point at which everything is fine and it's all solved. It really is a management plan, it's not, it's not a stormwater solution plan.
It is management. If I could just add to that, I think that, again, after we are, have completed the risk assessment, we'll be able to come back and say, not when will we have all of the 107, but we'll have been able to rank and grade those. And I think that it will be, again, conditioned upon a lot of variables, but I think that we'll be in a better position at that time to start focusing on higher grade and, you know, really by category.
So when that comes back to the board, right, we, we could discuss at that time whether or not there's any specific policy changes that we would want, in particular, because it comes up all the time, the idea about easements, right? And what is, and I think that this might be something the board wants to weigh in in terms of our expectations from community members, this is a community-wide problem, and so what our expectation would be vis-à-vis policy, and what we, to the extent that we can do anything policy-oriented that would incentivize or, we don't ever really, we hope not to ever talk about eminent domain, but to the extent that that is relevant when we're talking about easements. So I think that's something that we need to look at in terms of, you, staff keeps mentioning that easements are a barrier to solving this problem, and that seems to me like that is a barrier that is within the grasp of the community to do a better job at, and lower that barrier.
And to clarify, you're planting the seed for that potential conversation in context of the forthcoming comprehensive risk assessment, not for now, or are you hoping to spur that conversation now?
I think, well, I would defer to staff. It seems to me that that's probably a conversation that we could sort of ask for it now and tee it up, but then when that risk assessment comes back, dive into it maybe a little more deeper.
Mr. Papakosma, did you want to respond?
It's, it won't add more clarity to the answer, just, I was just adding, the other, another dimension is sort of what we call delivery capacity, you know, the project management, the engineering, the civic engagement to deliver the project. So there's the funding piece, but then there's also what sort of staff carrying capacity to do that as well. So they're related.
Right, right. They're both money.
Yeah.
Right.
Thank you.
I was going to just follow up a little bit, because we're talking about, you know, we hear from folks all the time whether new developments, new houses, that are making things worse. Do we have examples of times where there've been some new houses built that actually have put in measures that have made things better?
I'll let you answer that.
I was looking at me. I don't have a specific example. I have a generic answer, though. I think in some cases, you could see an improvement where, let's say the existing house was, you know, relatively large first lot, and maybe the runoff was just pointed next door, going right to the neighbor's home, and under the redevelopment scenario, there wasn't a very large increase in impervious area, but the runoff is handled better in terms of looking at impacts next door. So those situations do occur as well.
Yeah, I'd like to think that they do some. When, when our folks go out, because we do inspections of houses when they go, how often do they say, you know, maybe you don't have to do this, but you know, it would be much better if you did such and such to improve the drainage for your neighbors, or, you know, make suggestions about what they might do, because there's a limit to what we can force, right? But do we do a little sort of suggesting what people might do?
And we're talking outside the formal development process? Like, we got a complaint about flooding from next door?
Well, actually, you could answer both, but I'm sort of thinking, because there's general house inspections, and sometimes I get the, I get the impression talking to people, that people go in and inspect it, and it all goes check, 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 and somebody might even say, huh, that's going to be a problem, but they don't say anything because it's not on the checklist, it's not on the...
Yeah. So within the formal development framework, where there's plans approved and drainage patterns approved and, and all that, that's looked at pretty closely, you know, both at the planner view stage and then during the site inspection stage. Sometimes the inspector might spot something that could, could be improved. I think where we're still challenged is farther downhill. Eventually runoff goes, you know, in those situations where it goes downhill to neighboring properties as opposed to the street, those are situations that we're starting to look a little more closely at as well. Is there more we can do in those scenarios where the runoff is eventually, despite what's on... on-site and the mitigation measures, there's going to be larger storms and you might have impacts there? If we get complaints just generally about drainage, we do have technical assistance, you know, we'll go out and look at it. Sometimes we can talk to the neighbors, sometimes not, it just depends. We definitely have less, we don't have authority there, but we certainly try to be responsive to those.
Yeah, thank you. Bless you. I think the more we can get into proactive, where you see something and you see what might start happening, and I realize there are limits, but I think the more we could get into that, the better, rather than wait till we have a complaint, realize that maybe we address this now, it'd be simple, put this pipe this way, or, so, yeah.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Viscount.
Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks for the presentation, I appreciate the detail. I have a question about a couple of the slides. So at, at slide five, under objectives, the last bullet says, "Within physical, cultural, and fiscal constraints." I think I have a good idea of what the physical and fiscal constraints may be. What do you mean by cultural constraints?
This is not... Whoops, this is not an exhaustive list, but we're running into issues in, not just in stormwater, but in other areas with trees, and sometimes these solutions are going to impact tree canopy. Again, the easements and also just really having to work, I think, more with, with the community. There's disruption, there's, you know, kind of, we have to work our way around other pieces of infrastructure, there could be, you know, management of traffic, there's, there's dust, there's, you know, it's like being next to a construction site for some time. So I think the culture of that is to manage, you know, the kind of, in advanced case, manage the expectations and the frustration.
Okay, that, that's really helpful.
Yeah.
Interesting, and I understand exactly what you mean.
There can also be aesthetic issues, aesthetic issues that are, they're not, it has to do with the preferences of the community, that what's considered beautiful or how they intend to use the space, whether it's passive recreation or, you know, landscaping space. So that's what she, I mean, it's cultural, it's not, it's not a technical issue in some cases, it's the way people actually want to live.
Sure, sure, exactly. And what's, what's interesting is, you know, I mean, the fiscal constraints are going to be, it's kind of a countywide dynamic there, but, but the physical constraints and the cultural constraints are going to be much more localized, which I think compounds the...
And so my experience was building some of the large projects, there are some neighborhoods that are more taller, they can tolerate the heavy footprint of the construction better than other neighborhoods, that might be because they have young children, just some people just tolerate noise and dust better than other people, so that it does vary, and it's, it really has to do with cultural as opposed to any engineering constraint.
Interesting. Thank you. And then, if we could go to slide 11, so you list a number of baseline bullets and some supplemental, there's, there's no, there's no numbers attached to any of this, and I, and I realize you can't go into too much detail in a couple of hours of work session, but I'm just wondering if, if there's any way that maybe you could follow up by, in any way categorizing what the relative costs and, and personnel implications are for, for these various components? I mean, for example, street sweeping, that's easy, I mean, the, our budget, I think, this year has about $400,000 for street sweeping, but how do, how do we, how do we measure and quantify, or how much do we spend on, say, education and outreach versus engineering and planning versus capacity, infrastructure, and drainage? I'm just trying to get a relative fiscal, fiscal picture of that, and you can follow up on that, would be fine. And then, I don't know, Madam Chair, if this is, if this really goes to phase, phase one or phase two, but I think that the slide that, that really kind of distills our challenge for me is slide 26, where, what, what our mitigation limits are. And so I will, I will ask the question in terms of small lots, large homes and driveway footprints allowed on small lots by right, and we have different zoning categories and, and different ordinances and so forth. Does staff think that having a conversation about, for example, requiring greater setbacks, lower heights, all the kind of structural and building parameters, and I realize that this is a fraught topic because we're talking about property rights, we're talking about property values, we're talking about your home is your castle? My question is, if we were to go down this conversation and we were to have suggestions from the community, even if we were to achieve some sort of consensus, which I think would be very difficult to do, do we think that this would help at the margins? Would it help from a impactful and measurable and quantifiable result, or is it, do you feel, and I, and I realize some of this is hard, hard to predict or speculate on, but would, would it be worth the effort, I guess, is what I'm saying? Or are there a lot of other things that we can do that we should be doing, mindful of the fiscal and the cultural and the, and the, and the topographical and physical complaints, or constraints, rather, that we should be doing rather than having the painful discussion about do we actually want to adjust our zoning ordinance?
It's a great question, and in a recent individual case that we were discussing with the staff just literally last week, I think it was, I told the staff that we were fighting a proxy war for zoning as part of our stormwater program. And so that's not the intent of this, this work session, to settle the zoning issues, but that's how we kind of feel like it, because we're caught in the middle of all those things with lot coverage. From, my initial reaction is, the challenging is, you know, we want the zoning to be consistent and fair for everyone and to apply equally so that everyone can have a predictable, you know, if they want to redevelop, what the outcome might be. But the reality of it is, the topography in our stormwater system is so very different in different spots of the county, and the impacts on, you know, one set of property is like, I wouldn't want to impose those restrictions on one piece of private property where it's fine, I've got adequate capacity, I've got good topography, it all works great. And so why would I want to impose that on that lot, whereas this lot over here, I've got all kinds of stormwater problems? So it's how do I be fair?
Right.
Given those dynamics of a very disparate conditions from a stormwater perspective?
So in other words, how, how could you possibly localize?
Housing conservation district for sewers.
And, and, and micro, what's the right word, not micromanage, but micro-apply those...
I mean, I think that's actually sort of the purpose of our stormwater management development requirements, right? They are an effort to localize property to property. I will say, it's so interesting that you asked this, Mr. Viscount, because I was just in a briefing with staff, including Mr. Papagasma, earlier today about trees and that, you know, sort of lot coverage issue, which was, I think, last taken up by the board in, in 2004. One of the observations you made that I found really helpful, you probably could do a better job representing your own comment than I could, but that, that certainly part of the issue has been the issue of lot coverage period, but, but really what we've seen has been the greatest issue is the rapid pace of infill development and redevelopment of these properties. So in addition to, you know, whether we've kind of got the, the lot coverage issue exactly calibrated, and maybe from a stormwater perspective, if not from all the other perspectives you mentioned, it could be benefited, we could see benefits by, you know, for the reducing lot coverage. Nevertheless, at the rate at which we've seen really aggressive infill development and redevelopment, we would still probably be presented with some of the challenges. I don't know if I've represented that accurately, but I thought it was a helpful nuance, because I've been wrestling with the same, very same question you just asked.
Madam Chair? I was thinking, I was popping in housing conservation districts for, I mean, we have hotspots, and so I think what you're saying, I think what I heard Mr. Emanuel say is that we've got zoning, it's supposed to be equal everywhere, but they are, it isn't all equal. Some places are on top of the hills with very poor infrastructure, at the bottom of the hill, the more we build, it's not going to work because of what we got, where other places, it really doesn't matter. So I would think there might be something, it would get complicated, but if we're thinking of doing it for, you know, other reasons, like I say, housing conservation districts, perhaps because of historic buildings or something like that, this would be because of topography, and I think you could have statistics, and maybe that's a question for staff, there would be a way to quantify when certain areas are really challenged, and they probably need a little more stringent regulation to keep people from flooding out down below than, than other areas. And I think we've got the ability to map and quantify those regions.
Can you answer some of that?
Sure. Yeah, no, I think so. There's some photos in here, too, let me just get the clicker for a second, just to kind of emphasize that. Well, this is one, you know, you have situations where you don't have, where the water is flowing across from lots to other lots, down a hill eventually to the storm drain, and I think earlier on, we had this one, you know, again, steep slopes, you know, homes built, it might not be entirely clear here, but the homes on the left at the cul-de-sac are much higher than the ones on the right. So, yeah, those, those are where the challenges are really most acute when it comes to runoff and downstream.
And it seems to, to require the homes that we have in other pictures where it's absolutely flat, and maybe they even have new sewer structures, to have the same requirements as the home right there that's not at all flat, and maybe there's even a poor sewer system where there's clearly going to be a problem, to give them the same requirement is maybe not, not good, I don't know if you call it government zoning or whatever, but I know it makes it a lot more complicated, and we're not set to do it yet, but it's something that seems like reasonable to do, because all sites are not created equal, and we really have got some areas that are just having a terrible time. And it would be a shame to regulate the whole county in order to protect those folks, or to completely say, well, you're just out of luck from where you are. But I realize that would make, I assume, a lot of staff work, I don't know what all would be involved. Are we allowed to do that legally if we got to putting those out? That would be a question.
Everyone's looking across the room. Yeah.
You have to come talk into the microphone so that we can capture you for the record.
There we go, mine. You got, you got the question, right?
Yeah, I get the, I mean, I think it's something that is definitely worthy of exploration. I mean, there is a uniformity problem that we have to address, but for these, these, these kinds of lots that have these type of type topo situations, there may be a way to create like overlay zones that maybe you subject them to different requirements. We just have to look at that, I don't have a ready answer to you. The one immediate problem, of course, is that for the, for the built environment, none of that's going to help. I mean, they're going to be subject to the flooding that occurs, and, and I guess incrementally as lots redevelop and, and the new homes are subject to those requirements, you could gradually get to a better condition.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm thinking a lot of the homes where we've got older homes and there are little homes on large lots, lots of big trees, and maybe older, and then as it redevelops, suddenly the lot gets covered and the trees go, and it creates a whole lot of problems and the system's not ready for it. So I think we actually have a lot of that situation that we maybe could start to address.
So I think, Mr. Gershaw, did you want to chime in on this point, and then I'll go back to Mr. Viscount?
Thank you. And before we got to problem two, I did want to clarify a couple of things on this, which was, so, so the discussion just now about, and I appreciate your characterizing that sometimes you feel that stormwater becomes a proxy for, for zoning, what is a zoning issue? And I realize this might be a question actually more for, for our planning staff or zoning staff rather than, than these folks at the table, but so for, maybe for follow-up, the question would be, is lot coverage, the lot coverage provision of our zoning ordinance, is that intended to mitigate stormwater runoff? And I will, I ask that question with the expectation that the answer will be no, because I asked the same question from Planning Commission a couple of years ago, and that was the answer at that time. So I just want to confirm that that would still be true, because that's really important, because it's, because if we, as we, in particular, as we look at housing and we look at what we want to do with our housing policies and things like missing middle housing, understanding the relationship between lot coverage and density of use and how that impacts our stormwater management, I think we have to have, we just have to be clear about what the terms are and what we're talking about. And then with the specific issue of, of the uniformity, as the attorney, our attorney put it, in relation where you have homes that are in a watershed that are more problematic than others, the question for staff is, is that a potential benefit, although we, we're trying to, there's, there's a whole list of pros and cons of different approaches, but would that be a benefit, a pro for, for the system of sort of stormwater impact fees? Because the idea is, everybody's paying into the, into a fee into a system that is then used to fund mitigation, and so you might have a property that doesn't require a whole lot of mitigation, but you're still paying fees into the system that helps to pay for mitigation elsewhere, somewhere else. So that's a question.
Yeah, I think one of the things that I would say is we have to remember that when it rains, the water has to go somewhere, and we do need to provide conveyance of stormwater through the, through the neighborhoods.
Sure.
And off the streets. And so the lot coverage thing affects us in a sense that there's no room. I mean, if, if the house and everything that's built with the house takes up all the space on the lot, where is the water going to go? And that's where I think they keep bringing up, we keep bringing up the lot coverage issue.
So, or absorption capacity?
Well, so you, but if it's all covered, there's no absorption capacity, there's no room to physically put a facility in, a plant or anything if you're covering the entire lot.
So, so Mr. Gershaw, let me just add one thing, because, and I'm harking back 10 years ago to when the board originally adopted the stormwater tax, which at the time was, I think, 1.1 cents, now it's at 1.3. There was a very long conversation about whether we should do an ad valorem tax, which applies universally across based on value, or instead do something which was more of an impact analysis, saying that we would have people pay fees based on the degree of permeability of their property. And I'd have to go back, and I'm going to ask the, maybe the county attorney remembers, I think both of them were available to us. At the time, the manager then suggested that one was much easier to administer than the other, getting to this issue of having specific rates of, in other words, doing the analysis of how much each person was going to pay in and of itself would have taken an incredibly long time. Doesn't mean that it was a good or a bad idea, it's just administratively it made a lot more sense to do the across-the-board taxation. I don't know if that was part of your question.
Indirectly, yes. I think what, what I'm getting at, and I think we're about to talk about problem number two, right, which is how we handle redevelopment of single, primarily single-family lots, is that, that there's a, there's a considerable amount of expense that is incurred for stormwater management, once you exceed that 2,500 square foot disturbance threshold, and rather or not, if those impact, rather, rather than it's not possible to pay that into, some portion of that into a fund that then goes to help to mitigate these, some of the other hotspots, if you will, and other things. And I know that we're about to pull this apart, all the threads on this, that there are lots of different objectives that we're trying to achieve, but I think this speaks to the tension that the chair mentioned between the two problems, that where you have the watershed problem and then you've got the individual impact problem. So I wasn't really looking, you know, to go and reopen, rather we would do a property by property, parcel-by-parcel analysis of their impact, and instead of the uniform tax, it was more fees that could be paid at the time of significant disturbance.
I think, sorry, would it help if we were to do, and again, this isn't going to be exact, inherently, I, I just tend to think that it's a complex equation or calculation, again, given not only your space constraints, but the fact that when you redevelop, you're redeveloping, I've seen here, you're redeveloping lots that were first built out in the 40s, so now they're having to follow the current building codes, they're almost always, if not always, having to build up the grade of the lot, and because they're taking up very large, you know, envelopes or footprints in that lot, the angle is very acute between that height and maybe the height of a hum next to it, that's still at the 1940 construction level. The other thing to remember is that with very tight spaces, as Liz said, they're essentially, it's, it can be, I won't say always... it's, it can be, I won't say always, but it can be statistically insignificant post-development what stormwater the lot can absorb, because you've not only gone in with the fill, but between the compaction that the fill requires, the new construction and the construction equipment, the soil has been heavily compacted. It's why this also impacts trees heavily, because you're putting their roots under another eight to, you know, 20 inches of compacted fill, and you're smothering the roots. Not you personally, but all of us, in the kind of royal sense. But...
Tree killer.
No, 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 it's not, well, we get called that quite often. It just is the challenge of constrained spaces. It just simply is. So I don't know whether it would be helpful under that basis, because that's going to affect the calculation. It may be that the cost that's associated now with the mitigation on a redevelopment or development could be vastly eclipsed by what you might have to charge if you were saying, okay, because then you're going to get into the wonky science of saying, well, this is going to aggregate that, are you going to make it alone, is it going to be the compounding influence, et cetera? But now we're getting into, again, those kind of localized and perhaps watershed, it's not going to be the vast, you know, footprint or profile of a watershed problem, but it's going to be a contributory one. And those are always kind of, obviously, the more expensive mitigation challenges and projects to take on. So it would be interesting, but I think we'd want to kind of really guide and be very mindful of how we would even calculate that.
Sure. Chair, I'm ready to move on to the next one, but...
Weisstat had another question.
On that comment, I just wanted, I was letting you know, this was my final, final comment on this, which is, I think for future discussion, I'd like to double back on Mr. Weisstat's first question, which is, is there a model of redevelopment that, that actually does improve the footprint? Meaning the stormwater management footprint, not the literal four walls footprint. But is there a model of redevelopment that would be desirable, that would, that would further our goals as opposed to what we're talking about here? It seems like no matter what we do, when you have this sort of, this redevelopment, it's because of compaction and less available absorption, ground for absorption capacity and otherwise, that we, that we can't get anywhere. We're trying to fight our way out of a paper bag, and so that would be for future.
Can I address that a little bit? One of the other problems is that the redevelopment of the 1940 or 1930 lot is sometimes there is no infrastructure. Or there's the infrastructure of 1930, 1940, it doesn't mean anything, you know, it doesn't mean current standard. And so that just further compounds it. So redevelopment of the lot doesn't help because there's nothing there to, to capture the water anyway. We don't have inlets, we don't have tertiary lines, et cetera. And then even in a natural environment, rain exceeds the amount of any soil to absorb at all. And so you always have to have conveyance through the system. And that means there has to be space for water to go without damaging property or causing danger to the public safety. I mean, there has to be somewhere for the water to go.
And I think the blunt truth is that from what we, that's why I asked at the very beginning of where is our ultimate kind of build-out system, is that that's not clear to me how we are going to provide, under any scenario, even if we stopped redevelopment of our, of single-family homes today, it's not clear to me how we get to that system that has the conveyance that we, that we need, so.
Mr. Weisstat.
Yeah, so that, this, this, these last number of words are probably a pretty good segue into my question, and that is, Mr. Manager, we talk a lot about state of good repair, and I know that you have emphasized that in, in the recent budget and CIP, so let me ask you, and I'm speaking from memory here, but I remember when we talked about this a little, a number of months ago, in terms of our routine maintenance of our stormwater facilities, in terms of our physically going out and monitoring and checking, is it, is it a five-year cycle, am I remembering correctly? And then it's more often, if there's, if it's complaint-driven, you'll go out and check. But from a routine maintenance perspective, what is the cycle?
I'm going to let Mr. Manuel answer that question, or Mr. Moon, or Mr. Poppy, anyone.
How about me? Others can jump in, but just one, one way to answer that. So in terms of inspection of the system, that's on about a 20-year cycle, in terms of inspecting all the pipes.
Okay.
Just inspection. Now, if you're asking how, how much maintenance occurs, over what timeframe, that's a little bit deeper question. I'm not sure we have those, that, those stats for you here today, you know, how much pipe was replaced in last year or the past five years. But as far as just the inspection of the system, that, that timeframe is long, is about, it's about 20 years.
And is that, is that inspection like some, some employee going out with a microscopic device, or a flashlight, or a roto-ruder, or what do they do?
That, that statistic is for a contractor to use television camera.
Okay.
To go through the system.
Mr. Moon, to the rescue.
No, I just, I just, as a point of clarification, I think Jason's exactly right on the system. The five years that you're referencing, that's for bait, catch basins and inlet structures.
Okay.
And that's part of our MS4 permit, so there is a distinction, but the overall piping system is more of a 20-year.
Okay, so let me ask you then, since we have this differentiation between the five-year cycle and the 20-year cycle, do we think that, that, that given today's world and climate change, that, that those, that those chronological baselines are still working for us? And, and do you think that there would be any, what would be the cost-benefit of changing those numbers, I guess is my question?
Well, I think, I think what we're finding from just the inspection interval, I think some of the data, at least initially, was we, the team didn't see a lot of blockages, and we're kind of on top of the maintenance aspects. It's more of a capacity, true capacity issue, and, and some, to some extent, capacity and condition of infrastructure. It's more, more along those lines.
Okay, so in other words, it's, it's condition of the pipes, and it's the, the diameter of the pipes versus the maintenance of the pipes. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kirby, do you want to follow? Make the same, yeah. Wrap-up point. Okay. Thank you. So let's, let's move on then to the, the other major topic of the day, which is...
You can't inspect infrastructure that you don't have also, so, you know, you have to remember that.
Can't be reminded at that point enough. All right, moving on. So the, the stormwater regulations for development. I know, Mr. Gretzel, you alluded to some questions you had, so why don't we begin with you?
Sure, thank you. So I'm going to start with, with slide 20. And I think, my first question is, what is the, the relationship between, so we, we talk about, you know, it all stems from regulatory compliance, right? And we talk about the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance. And then we have specific targets, as I understand the way that we have implemented that. But can you just recap for me the relationship between what is our MS4 permit, how is that related when you get your LDA permit and you have your stormwater management plan? How are all of, all of those different pieces related to each other?
That's a good question. I need a microphone for that, all right. Okay, I want to start, though, with this slide. In terms of the ordinance, just emphasizing, we have two main objectives. There's the mitigation objective, which we've talked about the importance of and also the limits of, and then there's the compliance objective. And that second objective is tying into your question about how it relates to, when I say regulatory progress, I'm speaking to how it ties into our MS4 permit, so...
Real quick, if I could interrupt you, so on the mitigation side, that has nothing to do with compliance. So there's, there's no law that says that we can't flood our stormwater system.
No, there is. I mean, the...
Oh, we're not allowed to flood our stormwater system, okay.
Well, the code, up to the purpose of the stormwater ordinance in slide, what is that, 20? You know, it's basically, has a purpose to protect, to mitigate stormwater impacts from development in a variety of scales and, and settings. So there's downhill properties, there's storm drain capacity, there's water quality, and there's streams. So it really has that umbrella purpose.
Okay.
So that, and that comes right from state code, you know, it's the state stormwater management regulations, and then we apply it locally. And so that's, that's the overall umbrella purpose. We've got the two main objectives embedded in that purpose, mitigation and compliance. And when I say compliance, that, again, tying into your question, so under the MS4 permit, and I'll jump ahead to the last slide I had, we have, and all of the MS4 permotees in Virginia have this model, were assigned load reductions for these three pollutants, nitrogen, phosphorus, and sediment. So based on algorithms the state gives us, your land cover, your land use, you must reduce these pollutants by a certain amount. And then the timing of that is this 5% in the first five years, then 40%, and then eventually 100% of what they tell you you have to do has to be achieved at the end of that, that third permit cycle.
And this MS4, that flows down from the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance, correct?
No.
No.
And I wish I had a slide on this one, because it is, it is an alphabet soup, and it's, you know, all these different codes. So the MS4 permits come straight from the state. Virginia Department of Environmental Quality issues those permits to us, so we're regulated under that permit, as essentially as a stormwater point source discharger.
Okay.
It's the same framework as, like, the wastewater plants have point source permits for their discharges. The stormwater regulations at the federal level extended that point source discharger framework to stormwater in the, in the early 90s. So that's where the MS4 permit lives.
Okay. And then the Ches, Chesapeake Bay?
So the Chesapeake Bay, it is a lot. So then we have a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act at the state level that became our Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance. And at one time, all the stormwater and resource protection area stuff and tree canopy stuff was under that ordinance. In 2014, when we had to update our stormwater requirements to meet the new state requirements, the stormwater requirements were pulled out of the Chesapeake Bay Ordinance and into the new stormwater management ordinance. So stormwater requirements live there, and then the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Ordinance still has the resource protection areas and the tree canopy.
Okay, but so all of this water quality stuff, even though it's not linked to Chesapeake Bay anymore, it's, it all falls under the MS4?
Yeah, when I, when I say compliance and progress, I'm talking about...
It's all MS4.
MS4 permit, and then where the bay kind of linkage comes in is, the permit has these targets that are associated with the cleanup plan for the Chesapeake Bay.
Okay, very helpful. So now we have these MS4 requirements that, and we have the, the formulas that you talked about for each of those pollutant loads, and then that's what we use, that's how we developed the, the stormwater management permit requirements, right? So when someone comes in to get a land disturbing activity, LDA permit, and they have to submit a stormwater management plan and a grading plan and all of those sorts of things, and we review that and we look at, and for those who are familiar with this, if you've either own one, or you know somebody in your neighborhood who has a relatively new home in Arlington, and you see that the, the gutters go into a, a planter, and those planters then flow into sometimes another device, sometimes an infiltration trench, whatever, all of those aspects are all in pursuit of meeting our goals for the MS4 permit. Is that, do I have that right?
Indirectly. And the reason I say indirectly is the state promulgated the Stormwater, the New Stormwater Management Act and regulations in 2011, '12, that timeframe, in response to their obligations under the Chesapeake Bay Agreement to do more to help with the bay cleanup effort. So they updated and expanded the stormwater requirements across the state and made them more stringent, because the state was obligated to do so under the Chesapeake Bay Agreement. So that's...
Sure.
That's where it was tied to. So everything under that ordinance, all the computations, everything, that's specified by the state. And it was intended, I mean, it has the local water quality piece, but it was also in response to the bay obligations of the state.
Correct, but it is still part of the MS4 permit?
So the, and so the MS4 permit as an umbrella for all of our stormwater activities includes a requirement that Arlington County, as an MS4 permotee, have a program to address runoff impacts from development activity. So the ordinance meets that requirement.
Okay. All right, so then, can you, and we're getting at, one of the things that is still the biggest mystery to me, is this idea between water quality, the, the quality of the runoff versus the quantity. And from my education, I know that there's a relationship. The more quantity you have, it picks up pollutants as it flows downstream. That's why you see, after all this rain, the Potomac is brown, as opposed to normally, when it's, under normal conditions, it's, yeah, a little, hopefully not as brown. That's, and that's debatable about the quality of the Potomac. It's getting slightly better with time. But anyway, meaning the Chesapeake Bay Ordinance is working in the biggest picture, kind of, sort of. So the question, though, the quality of the water versus the quantity. So when we do these, when we require a single-family home under the LDA permit to do all of these best management practices, is the point to help to mitigate the quality of the water or the quantity of the water that is leaving the site? That eventually leaves the site, and I think we all agree with that the water eventually leaves the site, except for a very small amount that might be absorbed into the ground.
So the, the stormwater ordinance, you know, applies to single-family and other development activity. Overall, the stormwater ordinance requires measures to deal with both quality and quantity, so the water quality piece, and then also dealing with larger storm events and protecting downstream impacts, particularly storm drain system. To be honest, we simplify that for single-family homes. Commercial sites, school sites, you have the quality measures to meet those provisions of the code and the, and the computations, and you additionally have detention systems and other systems that help slow down and/or soak in, usually slow down, detain the runoff and release it slowly. That would add a layer of extreme complexity on single-family homes, because there's no space for that.
Right.
And you'd wind up having to pump out of, you know, big tanks underground. So with the single-family homes, we look, we apply the quantity requirements to try to look at where the water's currently going and how much runoff it is, and then, under the proposed conditions, what's going to happen then. And we try to make those conditions somewhat similar by the inclusion of those practices like the driveways and the planter boxes that meet the water quality requirements, but also have some storage volume and runoff reduction qualities. So we're trying to match those characteristics as best we can. It's not easy to do, to make the runoff for, say, a 10-year storm similar to what it was before it was developed. And so that's one area we started, we started to look more closely at that about, because the code has language about protecting downstream properties from flooding impacts. And so that's an area we're actually starting to look more closely at in response to the concerns about, from property owners who live downhill.
Okay, so when a applicant goes in for an, an LDA permit, and they get an engineer to do these calculations, and the calculations that come from the state, that have, that have been promulgated down from the, from the state, and they're looking to do that, they, how much flexibility is there in terms of what those calculations say? And when, when, when your staff reviews those, those applications, the permit applications, is it, is it kind of a yes, no, you meet it, or is there, is there room for negotiation? It kind of gets back to Libby's point earlier about how we look at the whole system and say, well, point the water this way, not that way, do those sorts of things. So what flexibility is there in the review of those applications?
The, the starting, starting point to answer that question is the state provides us, basically provides the menu of different options you have to meet the runoff requirements, stormwater runoff requirements. So, you know, whether it's, you know, rain gardens or similar things, planters are a type of rain garden essentially, or pervious driveways, or is it green roofs? And I'm speaking across the development spectrum, not just what you see on single-family. You know, underground, manufactured filter systems, there's, there's a menu of practices the state lays out, lays out all the specifications in terms of how they have to be built, how they're sized, you know, how much area they, how much water they have to hole and flow rates and all those things. So we follow that very specifically. We've simplified it a little bit for single-family to make it more adaptable to those sites, and especially, we really try to emphasize that what gets built is something that a typical homeowner can maintain and not have to hire a professional to come in and deal with, or if it fails, because it's underneath their deck and nobody can get to it. So we do try to simplify it for single-family homes a little bit. But the state essentially lays all that out and all the computational methods that go with that.
So the review at staff level, though, then there is some level of, of flexibility, of whether it's site specificity or otherwise? Because when you say you simplify it for single, I'm not sure if I follow what that means.
I guess I mean that we allow a little bit more, we've set some additional, for, as an example, to do a perv, to do pervious paving material generally, like a porous paving, you have to have a certain soil infiltration rate, which we often don't have. And what we've said on single-family homes is as long as you're not directing other runoff into that driveway, you're just letting the rain that falls on it, we don't worry about the soil infiltration test, because we feel comfortable that that will help... about the soil infiltration test, because we feel comfortable that that will help mitigate you, and it opens up that tool that otherwise wouldn't exist, because they'd have to pay for a soil test, probably would come back that it's not good soil, and then they couldn't do it. So, that's the type of-
Sure, but so, the bottom line of all of this is, yeah. The bottom line here, though, just so I understand correctly, is that even when we follow all of these things, the best management practices, is that we are still finding that new homes, because of the increase in the impervious area, or pervious area, rather, is, it still is creating more, it's exacerbating the problems, the larger watershed problems that we were talking about earlier downhill from these, downstream from these, from where the construction site is. So, all of this stuff that we're doing is somehow not actually solving the problem. And this is the real crux of where I, what I struggle to understand, is that if it's about both quantity and quality of water, one, the quality, when you're talking about with the water that you're catching off of your roof, basically, I'm not sure that I really understand how that water is particularly lacking in quality, unless it's picking up a bunch of pollutants from the air on its way down and the roof itself. Then, the, and then the other aspect, though, the quantity of it, because we know if the water's going to be released anyway, and it's going to go downhill anyway, then, that's what I struggle with, to be honest with you, is to understand how, for a considerable expense, how we are actually solving the problem. I think that we might be checking boxes in terms of requirements from the state, but I'm not so sure that we're actually solving the problem.
Please, yeah.
And just briefly, I think, just to add to the previous line of conversation, then your recent point, there's a lot of time spent at the site review stage on the grading and topography on the site and where the water's going. That's a lot of where the back and forth, one of the places where the back and forth between the designer and planter view is. To the point you just made, again, I think we try and emphasize that the ordinance is about mitigation, it's not about elimination, and there are limits to what, to the degree of that mitigation. I think we can say pretty comfortably that if we didn't require these things, it would be worse, in terms of the impacts being created and then aggregated as other lots were turned over as well. I mean, I understand where you're coming from. We are concerned about that as well. We wish the mitigation was even more effective, but I think we're kind of comparing it to as if we didn't do it, and where would that be?
And Mr. Green, I know you've been waiting.
Thank you, no, and I'll just follow up. So, but what I think I've heard you say is that right now with our ordinance, the mitigation is basically required to kind of be the same across the county, whereas, it's pretty clear there's some places where it's really important to mitigate, because I got the folks downhill, and they don't have, you know, the variety of reasons. And that, I think I've sort of gathered that we could improve the effect of what we do by not treating everybody the same, but honing in on some particularly problematic areas, and making the ordinance adjust a little bit to those problems, which, looking on slide down, I can put my glasses on to see which one this is, 20. The purpose is mitigation of stormwater runoff impacts from development downhill properties. Well, some places don't have downhill properties. Storm drain capacity, some places have got real good storm drain capacities, some don't. So, there really is a difference, and it seems to me our ordinance could be tailored more. Or is it already tailored as much as you think it can be?
I think one, so, one way to answer that is, if there aren't downhill properties, then there's less focus on what's happening downhill.
So, you don't require, we do have different requirements.
Yeah, the baseline requirements are the same. Sometimes we'll require additional things-
That's what I wanted to know.
-to try to slow down that runoff as best we can.
And do you think we're doing as much as we can with the ordinance to differentiate?
I don't think we spend a lot of time differentiating at the scale we've talked about today, like where you'd set up zones and that sort of thing. The ordinance is not currently set up that way. I think the area that we're starting to look more closely at is, what additional analysis should be done when there are downhill properties?
Ah, okay, so that, and that, and you think that's worthwhile? Because I realize you could be doing a whole lot of analysis for a little bit of difference. You think it would be worthwhile to do that?
Yes, where you have the downhill properties, some of the examples we've shown here, I think that's an area we are, we are already starting to look at that more closely.
That would be great, and it would be very nice for us to be able to tell our residents that we're doing that, I think. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Bush, on the same point.
So, yes, just with downhill properties, is there, you know, aside from grading, are there any other, is there any other expertise that we can, or actually, not even expertise, or any other requirements that we can bring, just conceptually, to the regulatory process to actually mitigate the impacts that we're hearing from, you know, fairly periodically in our community about development, not writ large and lot coverage, but specifically as it relates to something upstream?
So, you're saying, in terms of the board and regulatory authority? You know, we were, the same topic with the downhill properties, we've been looking at the code, which comes right from state code, and it says pretty clearly in there about not causing increased flooding impacts to downstream properties. So, the authority is, we believe, is actually there. It's the question of the lack of infrastructure and the lack of space is what we're struggling with, is even if you've maximized it onsite, and maybe you've tweaked some things here, whatever it is to maybe even improve how we do it onsite, as Liz pointed out, the water will go downhill. That'll be our takeaway from today, if nothing else. And where does it go? And can you intercept it? Is it going across, you know, this is going across multiple backyards, there's fences. It gets back to the, if everything were laid out today, if like this were a subdivision, that drainage would have been addressed in a way that didn't have the, you know, impacts that we're seeing today. So, I don't know, I mean, others could jump in here. I don't think we have a regulatory issue with it, as much as a physical sort of layout and system constraint issue.
So, there's no way to sort of go from that regulatory sort of ability to, you know, maybe requiring that more of it be collected through, and I'm, you know, this is not my field, so I don't know how you go about doing this, but do we have more rain collection that we could actually require, since, you know, if, okay, all right.
So, we don't have the answers for you today. We're looking at these things. I think this slide is a great example of the challenge, because, you know, even if we could, you know, collect the money by impact fee, or whatever it was, if we had necessary resources, I'm still dealing with all private property in many cases, that I'm dealing with eight different private properties, 12 different private properties.
About the easements.
And so, the easements and access rights, and getting people to agree, and I don't control the timing or pace of redevelopment of which lot goes when at all. And when you, if you're going to do something like, let's just say, on the back lot lines here, to collect, intercept the uphill ones and take them out to another street, I've got to have cooperation of a whole bunch of property owners in time and space that I'm not going to get. It's, I got to have a totally different process to be able to go about something like that. And it's all, in many cases, all private properties. There's a few places where we might have like a public alley or something, where we have rights, or blocks like that in Arlington. A lot of places, it's just private to private, and for me to intervene, you know, take down trees and put in lines is, that's a huge capacity of staff and time.
And, you know, back to Mr. Gutschall's point, just so I'm understanding the framing of this, and as it relates to other communities, if you're not topographically flat, and, you know, building a planned community from the ground up, is it possible for this to be solved? Intuitively, it seems to me, no, you're always going to be mitigating something unless you are controlling the pace of development from a status baseline of zero, and you have no topo issues at all to deal with in terms of downstream effects, that you can never solve this. Is that-
I think, well, you're correct. The simple answer is, you're correct, and that's why we always use the term mitigation, not elimination of risk. That doesn't mean that the level of mitigation can't reach reasonable levels-
Sure.
-that give people a reasonable level of security, in addition to the other things that they can do, you know, independently and themselves. To give you a kind of idea of the challenge, we're dealing with a particular issue right now that, and I'm not mentioning the neighborhood, only because it's a watershed-scale problem, and I don't want to keep on falling into the bad habit myself of associating it just with the neighborhood. We're literally assessing six different, yeah, almost seven now, approaches to that watershed fix, and the great likelihood is that ultimately, the resolution will be elements from multiple different approaches. And it has to deal with space, and it has to deal with impact, and it has to deal with the scale of the mitigation, and it has to deal, you know, I just want to add on, when we talk about cultural, just to amplify or elaborate on what Liz said, there are going to be elements that we can use such as swales, that some people may not find aesthetically as pleasing as something else. So, it becomes a kind of mosaic that we put together.
Infrastructure doesn't have to be pipelines, you can have ditches, swales, but pathways to allow water to flow among and between the houses. Mr. Vice-Chef.
Thank you. So, continuing on the mitigation front, back in 2014, when we adopted the current, I guess, the first stormwater management, our master plan, there was some criticism by some of our commissions, the Environmental and Energy Conservation Commission, among others, and the Urban Forestry Commission, who didn't believe that the plan gave enough weight and value to trees. And there were some adjustments made, the plan was adopted, and now we have our current plan. So, my two questions are, number one, from a tree perspective, where we appear to be maintaining at best our current tree canopy, there's been a lot of discussion in the community about the value of trees. What is staff perspective on the importance and value of trees in managing and dealing with stormwater runoff and also, and management? And Mr. Papakosma, I appreciate your referencing green roofs. We have one right out here, it's not food-producing, but there is green, and we've done it on the Trade Center and the Walter Reed Community Center, and a number of other public buildings, and now we're starting to see them, fortunately, on apartment buildings and even a few residences. So, number one, value of trees, number two, value of green roofs, and how we can have a more aggressive approach to recognize the value of both of those mitigants.
I can say one thing. The preference for green roofs falls into the cultural categories or constraints, so that many residents don't understand, or it's not the preferred architectural style-
Oh, residential.
-of a residential, you know, home.
Good point.
Now, I think our view on trees is very similar to others, other advocates in the community, certainly our colleagues in Parks, Parks and Natural Resources as well. I mean, it goes hand in hand. I mean, trees have an important role in the hydrologic cycle, for sure. You know, some of the focus here in our realm is, yeah, there's sort of the regulatory framework and what you can and can't get credit for, and trees aren't currently something you can get credit for. Doesn't mean you shouldn't get credit for that, or that there aren't going to be activities along the lines to try to put them in that toolbox, but they clearly have an important role in watershed scale, in particular, stormwater management, but even at the localized scale, because of all the water uptake that the roots provide, and that lets the soil have more absorptive capacity, so there's less runoff when we do have storms. So, it's very complimentary, I guess, to the things that we work on as well. I don't know if that answers your question in its entirety, but-
It answers it in part. So, when you say that no credit is given to trees, now, do you think that would be helpful? And could we do something at the local level that gives credit to trees, even if we don't, even if it's not mandated by the state?
I think, yeah, I think our, because we fall, you know, under that state umbrella in terms of regulatory authority and toolbox, I think as well, we want to make sure that if we go down that road, that it's being done in a robust way that was vetted and looked at by all the stakeholders. And yes, this credit is the right credit. It's not overcrediting, or it's not off-base, or creating unintended outcomes, so-
But, Mr. Papakosma, would you agree that it's worth consideration?
Oh, getting credit for trees? Absolutely.
And how about green roofs?
So, green roofs, you do get credit for. There's two types, and they have terrible names. One's called intensive, one's called extensive. Which one do you think is deeper?
Intensive.
I think it's extensive.
Okay.
Which is silly. The extensive ones, they tend to get more credit. The intensive one's not so much. There's not a lot of incentive in the toolbox for the smaller green roofs, but the larger ones, yes. The good news is, there's synergies with green building objectives. You get lots of green building types of credit for those rooftops. And we've also been talking recently, we haven't had the conversation internally, but you can also get some landscaping credit for, I think, the deeper green roofs, for some of the zoning requirements. So, I think those synergies are important to try to maximize their application, because we certainly think in the commercial setting in particular, it's a great tool, has a lot of multiple benefits.
So, actually, you mentioned the word "commercial," and so, let me segue to that for a second. So, one of your slides pointed out that 60% of the increase in impervious surfaces is attributable to single-family development, meaning that 40% is elsewhere. What about the elsewhere? Our primary focus today has been on residential. What about commercial? What about community facilities and other structures?
In terms of what they're doing, or-
In terms of our approach going forward for stormwater management.
I think a general way to answer that is that where we see impacts in terms of flooding and runoff, it's this situation that's up on, that's still up on the slide here, not so much in the commercial sector. We are starting to see, though, and Liz will happily jump in on this, there's infrastructure that is, quote, "in the way" of redevelopment, and that starts to happen. So, you might have a main stormwater line that was where the stream used to be, that's running diagonally across a parcel, and when redevelopment occurs, that you can't have it there, and so, that has to be rerouted. And that's a real challenge, in terms of keeping the capacity the way it needs to be, not exacerbating upstream or downstream issues. So, that's a different set of issues than this issue. I don't know if you guys want to touch on that at all, if that's where you were going with this?
Yeah, just briefly, thank you.
Yeah, well, with the summer that we've had, we've actually had some problems in the commercial areas. Again, there's been capacity issues in the trunk lines, and then there've been, their private laterals have been insufficiently sized also for the amount of rain that we had this year. And so, those things are happening. And then, as Jason mentioned, with the redevelopment of some of the commercial parcels, and we actually have storm sewers under existing buildings, for instance, or they go right through the middle of a parcel, and then when they want to redevelop, they have to relocate all that, and we're having some issues regarding overland relief. So, when the system is, and any storm drainage system will be over, it will be overwhelmed at some point, because nature has an infinite number of storms. So, you still need the water to be able to go through the community without destroying all of your redeveloped parcels. And so, finding those overland flow paths has been, you know, challenging. That's even in the commercial areas.
So, when you, when, continuing for just a second on the commercial front, do you feel that there is any sort of need to examine our site plan conditions and specifications, for example, for sewer diameter or other infrastructure requirements in the context of commercial development? Or is this, are we talking about such random and one-off and fleeting instances that that would not be productive?
If I can jump in, I actually think, and I hate to keep on going back to it, but I think, it's not the silver bullet for everything, but I think the risk assessment is going to be so helpful in so many ways, because right now, what we're doing is, it seems, is that we're asking ourselves, do we have to change the criteria for a different level of water and a different level of storm? And it may be impossible, or cost prohibitive, or not particularly prudent, to go too far in the other direction.
Yeah.
But we're also looking for that study, too, to hopefully start identifying a couple. I think the team has been, I've only been here six months, but I think the team has been really diligent and exhaustive about looking at the constraints and coming up with solutions, but we're hoping that maybe even technology or other solutions may reveal themselves in that study.
And remind me of the timetable of that once more. And remind me of the timetable of that once more.
Once we're able to get the procurement out on the street and, and finish the procurement, it will probably be 12 to 14 months.
And so when will it, what's our best hope? What's our realistic hope for getting it out of the street?
I'm, I'm hoping, let me put it this way, I'm hoping that we will have sufficient data to be able to come back and give you a far more well-informed response, regardless of whether the study is 100% complete within 18 months.
Of today?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now I back myself into it, haven't I?
Ms. Garvey?
18 months, we've got, I just find, I'm, I'm sort of done with questions today, I think mostly, but looking at slide 35, I think it is, you know, we're, we're talking about change, people not liking the way swales look, people not wanting to give easements, all of these kind of things. And I think, you know, we'll find out next year, now, this was for this year, we'll find out what happens next year. And, you know, we hear that this is, this is maybe getting closer to the new normal. And as getting to the new normal, we're going to have to help, I mean, I think this, this slide, maybe we ought to kind of like put it around. It's very colorful, but it makes a really important point because if we're trying to change the culture, which is maybe what we're going to need to do if the culture's getting in the way, this kind of information would be helpful in doing that. And I think as we see more and more people just, you know, having a terrible time, it'll be clear that things that we haven't wanted to do before, all of a sudden, they look a lot more necessary, and it's a lot more reasonable to do them. So that's just more sort of the public communication piece of it. But I think, I don't know if we can overuse that slide for a while. Maybe it'll be a whole lot better next year and a whole lot drier, but I wouldn't count on it. So that was it, and that was all. Thank you. I really appreciate, and the study I think will be great, really important to do.
I think that's actually a really important point, Ms. Garvey, that the dynamics of rainfall are changing dramatically, along with our other weather patterns, and so this is very much a moving target. Other comments or questions? Sure, by all means, take us there. Let's, let's wrap up.
I, I do want to thank staff. I mean, it's, if nothing else, even though I've, I've sort of alluded to the fact that the problem is, is nearly intractable, it's certainly not for lack of great professional staff and the efforts that you've put forward. And I specifically appreciate all of the patience that you've shed with me and not just here today, but in numerous briefings. And, and so thank you very much. I think what I wanted to, to sort of leave this conversation with today is to just reinforce for my colleagues and for really everyone who's, who's paying attention to this issue, is that my chief goal here is to make sure that we are getting the most bang for our collective buck, if you will. And I've, and I include that in the collective dollars, in the money that we are, that we are asking, requiring folks that come in and that want to get an LDA permit, so primarily doing a reconstruction of a, of a single-family home, significant amount of expense that is going towards engineering fees and, and other compliance costs. And I'm going to continue, and if we put slide 27 back up there, because I think it is very illustrative of, of the point, that if you look at the watershed, so tying it together, the, the relationship between the individual properties and then the watershed in which they exist and this, and the larger context of the problem, is that if you took, I counted in that one block there, 18 homes, and let's say four or five of them over the years have had enough work to require an LDA permit, so they have implemented their own mitigation measures, their best measure, but they have, they have pervious driveways, they've got planters, all the downspouts coming into planters, they've got all the, the various things. They've got a grading plan, an approved grading plan. And the point is, is that if, I will contend that, continue to contend that if we can get to a place where they still do those things, but rather than having them very specifically engineered, we have some templates for them. I don't think it takes frankly, a, a professional engineer, an engineer with a P E, to stamp a drawing to figure out how big a planter should be for a given roof size for your downspout. I don't think it takes a whole lot of expertise to understand where you're going to have a pervious driveway. There, and I could go down the list. There are lots of things that we're doing that I think could be more templament, templated. And then if we took some of those funds, if we, if we gave them an option to kick money into a fund, and we went to the other, then that would be, if there's 18, that'd be another, the other 13 homes on this block. And we use that money, for example, to incentivize and say, well, hey, if any of you guys, you may not need an LDA permit, but if you're thinking about doing some landscaping and you're willing to give us the access and the easements that we need, and you're willing to replace your driveway with a pervious paper driveway, here are some funds that are able to offset that and subsidize. Is that going to solve the problem completely? No, but I think for the dollars that we're spending, that additional, and we talked about how it's all about mitigating what we can, it's not about, there is no magic bullet here, no panacea. I think, and I will continue to contend, that we can stretch those dollars, we could be more creative about how we get to compliance for everyone and how we use those dollars to multiply that effect across the watershed. Thank you.
Thank you. Did you want to make any comments on that matter? Points well taken. All right. Excellent, Mr. Viceet.
Well, not to disrupt, disrupt the, the elegant flow, if you will, of Mr. Gutschall's closing remarks, it does remind me to, to ask a question, Mr. Papakosma.
Is that a compliment?
Well, it's... So, so in terms of, of individual empowerment and, and, and encouraging folks to be able to do what they can within the four corners of their lot, one of the programs that, that I think has a great deal of value is our Stormwater Wise program, and it's limited in terms of funding and scope and impact, surely. But I believe you have a slide up that, that shows that in, in various patches and, and corners of the community, people are taking advantage of this. And so I guess my question is, what is staff's perspective on the true value of the Stormwater Wise program where people are incentivized to put in those pervious driveways and other environmentally sensitive landscaping? Is it, is it more of a, you know, kind of a feel-good trendy type of, of thing? Or is there really value added here? And if there is value added, how can we further encourage and perhaps even fund the program so that more people take advantage of it and there's a broader impact for good?
You told me you were going to ask this question, so it's good. We, no, we, we really think the program is valuable in a number of ways. I did actually go back, you asked about, I think when the work, and we had talked about maybe the return on investment question in, in our, in our briefing, and we did, the return on investment is about three to one. So in terms of what we invest, we invested for FY '17 about $60,000 in the, the cost share for, you know, pervious driveways and conservation landscaping and rain gardens and those types of things. And participants spent almost $200,000 of their own money on, on those projects. So that's, we like that in and of itself because that's a good leveraging of, of public dollars and with, with public-private partnerships. And then the projects themselves have value in terms of, in a lot of cases, to the property owners themselves, they have a drainage issue they want to address, they've got a wet spot in their yard, why is that? Well, we can help them, and oftentimes, the problem is solved through, through more vegetated approaches like rain gardens. And then runoff downhill or downstream with pervious driveways, other things that reduce runoff, there's value there. If your question is how do you scale that up, I mean, that is, that is an important question. We're doing about, we're funded to about, to have about 40 participants a year. I don't have the numbers in front of me of the total participants we have, I'm looking... Okay, so to date, 200, about 250 properties have participated in the program.
Since inception, which was when?
Since inception, about 2013? Sooner, earlier? Yeah, about past five years, about 2013.
Okay. And we, we also had an exchange in terms of, do you foresee a time when it would be valuable and feasible for the county to actually get credits for, for this, or...
Yeah, we've, we've, we've thought about that. I think if, as we proceed, in particular if we scale it up, I think we want to explore that a little bit more. The challenge with that is it does kind of then become a little bit more of a regulatory framework, because if we want to get credits that we can claim, then we need to make sure that those systems are intact over time, which we, we still want to encourage anyway. We, we actually, you know, have people sign a maintenance pledge and do some other things to keep the things intact. But if we go down the road of creating credits, it probably would come with a check-in process.
Got it. So some, some sort of periodic inspection and...
So we want to just think about how that, how that plays into the, yeah.
Okay, well, I, I appreciate that, and, and thanks for your creativity, and let's move forward.
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Any other final thoughts?
For my own part, I'll just echo the thanks. I really appreciate the sort of problem-based approach to this work session in particular. It's such a technical issue that I think the opportunity to both familiarize ourselves with the context, but also to really dig in on some of the challenges around the particular issues we're hearing has been incredibly effective. So thank you for, for the flexibility in developing the agenda, and thank you for applying your incredibly detailed technical expertise at enough of a level that we can comprehend it and understand how to move forward as others have surfaced. I think we've talked about quite a few areas for, for their discussion today. So this is a live issue, I think in particular, we're really going to look forward to the results of that assessment. I think that might bring, I hope it will bring, a level of predictability or expectations to the community. I think one of the things that we saw when our CIP analysis process coincided with those horrible rainstorms was a lot of consternation and concern about the lack of predictability. So the effort that you all have underway, I think, is, is going to be incredibly helpful for that public conversation. Seeing no further questions, I'm going to go ahead and close this out again with a hearty thanks to all the staff who've joined us today. And commissioners?